Good evening. My name is Kim Shepperson. I'm the Chair of the Board of Education and I am opening up our regular meeting on December 12th, 2022 at 6:00 P. M. This is our meeting that we would normally hold on the fourth of the month, but it is during winter break. And so we will not be holding meetings. So actually for the board members to remember that this is our last of our regular and or C O Ws for the year. We have gone through a two twenty twenty-two year together. Um, and so when I call the meeting to order with a pledge of allegiance and Ted, you have my last in my eyesight. Would you please lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I believe we do not have any visitors or delegations to this meeting. Is that correct?
Correct.
Awesome. So we are moving down to the comment comments. Section, um, and this is the portion of the agenda where the board welcomes comments from citizens. Each presentation should be limited to five minutes or less, and citizens should, if possible, submit written comments. Presentation should be related to matters pertinent to Groton. Board members will only ask questions in order to clarify the speaker's presentation and cannot respond during the comments of citizen portion of the board meeting. Citizens should state their names and address for the record. Ms. Joan, do you know if there is anyone who who shared interest in speaking?
Back to me.
Okay, is there is no people, no other people. There are lots of people in this room. I apologize for that, but there is no community members in our room. Are there community members that are on Zoom that would like to address the board?
Not that I see.
Thank you, Mark. Yeah, but I think it was not for us.
Nothing in the chat.
Okay, thank you, sir. Go away. Not anyone, sorry. You know what? I I want to just make sure because it's like six oh four. So I'm slowing it down just a tad because I don't want someone to walk in at six oh five saying, you, what do you mean? I can't speak to the meeting, so. Oh, she just batted her eyes. I think that's not a good thing. Miss Andrea, all right, um, we are going to now move on to our student representative. Um, and so all three of them are here. That is amazing. I don't think that people from home can see that, but all three are here and it's so good to have you. Um, all three. Yay, 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 yay. So I don't know who goes first.
I'll start saying.
Sure, I'll say thing. Uh, so I just a few things about in fora and about the music department. So fora is one of the clubs I talked about last time that I mentioned last time they had an open mic night coming up. Um, so they had that this past week and that went really well. And and I had talked to Mr. Juvenado, who's the teacher that oversees the club and the students. And so they said, didn't quite have like the um, the like show up like they didn't have quite as many audience numbers as they had hoped for, but they said the people that were there really did enjoy it. Um, and then it went really well. So they're hoping to be able to do another one of those on the back of the winter break. Uh, and then they're also starting a new contest for um, all the all the art students to be able to be involved in. So it's not just those to writing, but that people um, involved in the arts, singing or the other music or or like what we have in the river, just different things like that. And so kids can be involved in that as well, and they're hoping that that can last the rest of the year. Um, so that can be kind of an ongoing thing that they can enjoy. And last time I also mentioned about the new caroling group on at Bitch and the over the past few weeks, some at the shack and at the Nautilus, which were a lot of fun because we had two different groups there that we were singing for, and it was a really great experience, and we had a lot of donations for this Hawaii trip. So that was also really exciting. Um, and then the orchestra bands and choirs are all performing on the twenty-third for our school. And so we're gonna have a school life sometimes. Everybody's gonna get to hear a little bit from this group. Um, which is really exciting now that we have a new choir and orchestra director so they can kind of get a feel for what that's like, and hopefully in the years going forward, more people get involved, which also has to do with our eighth graders that were here last week. And they came up and each group did a musical group did a little something for them, and it was really promising. They got a lot of very good feedback from teachers at the middle school, reaching out to I mean, Ms. Hall, the choir and orchestra director. They're saying that they had a lot of students that were really interested in being in the music program in the Bitch. So that was really exciting.
Very good.
Okay, so I know I mentioned this last time, but we had our eighth graders visit. And it started off with a panel where a few of us would answer some questions they sent in. Then we gave them tours, which was a bit hectic because some of us took over too long for our tours, but it worked out. And then we finished with like a mini pep rally for them. So we had musical chairs, we got our band play, and then we were like throwing T-shirts into the stands for the eighth graders. I'd say they definitely enjoyed it, and it's something that I wish I would have done my eighth grade year. Sometimes they're doing it. My second thing is our tape fundraiser. I actually sent Mr. Piazza a video. If you'd be able to play it on. Okay.
Everybody see that? I don't know if I have to. Let me see if they can hear.
It looks like it's a. We can't hear the sound. Do you want me to go on mute?
Yeah.
For my last topic, I have a list of spirit weekdays for next week. Starting off with. So our first day is the jam a day, and then we have holiday colors day, character day. And we're still thinking about a couple of the others, but those are our main three so far. And then we're trying to make a commercial for it this week to kind of hype it up. And our tape fundraiser commercial went well, so positive, just one of the ones.
It's fun. How cool is that?
Pretty cool.
It's really cool.
Okay, um, they kind of covered everything happening with that fish. But I know the middle school is having their winter concerts this week, I think fourteen to fifteen, so Wednesday, Thursday. Um, and so I know people are looking for those, and this is in January, but I believe Catherine Polnaski is also having their winter concerts, you know, band orchestra, of course. Um, like mid-January, which sounds around the time that we're gonna be having midterms. But for about like three years, it'd be three, four years. Uh, I know a lot of you are preparing your food for those. Really exciting.
So Kate, when's the last time you took midterms? I mean, you're a freshman here.
And I hadn't taken a final until last year.
Wow.
So I'm always curious, do they help or hurt? So we're going to be looking at some data this year to make sure they're more helpful.
Time on the clock.
Yeah.
I think what's really nice about um, being able to be those sponsors for a bit a while since we thought we had an in-person concert like that. So I know a lot of things I'm really looking forward to. It's the first year we've really been able to hold things like that where people can come and see performances. It's really exciting to.
Do you have any more caroling coming up?
Yes, a lot, actually. So on the twenty-third, or no, the twenty-second, we're going to the middle school and to some of the elementary schools to herald the students there, which is really exciting. Um, and then the Saturdays, the pancake breakfast for um, the choir and the orchestra at Bitch. And so we're gonna have plenty of performers. I think there's a duet, um, of violins that have been working on this new piece, like outside of their regular class. And I know they're really excited for that. I'm pretty sure the holiday piece. Um, and then I'm pretty sure the honors orchestra, as well as the carolers, will be coming along. So. That'll be a lot of fun.
And I'm cooking that. I'm cooking for breakfast.
Oh, good for you.
I need to speak short orders, Jack.
Pancakes for everyone under Will. How cool. Is there any questions from um, any of the board members that are on Zoom? Okay, hearing none. It's so good to see you guys. So thank you, thank you, thank you for sharing. I really appreciate that. All right, we are going to move on to the superintendent and administration reports.
So I'd like to say we had a um, really nice visit from N E S. Did you meet some of the N E S visitors? And they were very impressed, especially of our students and our school and our teachers. And we had some jobs we had to accomplish, and I think we really did. We're on the road to really making some nice progress, and I'm gonna let Principal Keller come to the table and share a little bit of the details and make sure all of the board members know what R I stands for. We're making sure the kids know, the teachers know, and not only the the students and staff at Bitch, but across the district. Ted and I are on it to make sure that the that vision of the graduate, which starts when they're in pre-K, preschool, um, is understood by all.
Absolutely. Um, yeah, so I I just wanted to take a few minutes just to talk a little bit about um, the N E S visit and what we accomplished in this visit and probably a little bit, make sure people don't really understand the the whole process. So first of all, can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
So um, first, just to go through the the N E S process with everyone, um, you know, it used to be the the old process that people knew was that you saw N E S every ten years. Um, and every ten years you'd have that decennial visit. Um, which, you know, I I always saw as a good opportunity to self-reflect and get to get an idea of of what you're doing, but it a lot of people saw it as kind of a a really nerve-wracking experience. Uh, and uh, they really tried to change this uh, to be more of a collaboration uh, between N E S and the schools where um, you're really identifying some areas for improvement, and they're working with you as colleagues to uh, to really uh, look at those areas and determine what steps you're going to take. So um, so it really is two visits now. It's it's much two much smaller visits uh, where they have what's called the collaborative conference visit. Uh, and then the decennial visit. This last visit was this decennial visit. We went through the collaborative conference visit in October of twenty twenty. Um, it was obviously more of a virtual visit uh, because of of COVID. Uh, but the whole idea of that visit is you do write a report where you're looking at your entire school and you're identifying certain areas for improvement. And obviously, there's there's a whole lot for the visit, but if you really wanted to condense it down, the visit is basically when they come in, they take a look at your entire school, and then they say, do we agree or disagree with what you think you need to improve upon? And um, and really, uh, the different areas of report. Essentially, our collaborative conference visit was, here's three things we want to improve upon, and the S agreed. That is that is really the simple piece. The the decennial visit, what we just went through here in early December, uh, was really about progress. It's talking about, okay, it's been a few years since our our collaborative conference visit. How are you doing with with what you said you wanted to improve upon, and what do you think the next step should be? And so it's a much more focused visit than the the original collaborative conference visit. Um, where, yes, they do look at the whole school. They want to go through and and learn about different things, but but they're really concentrating on those areas of improvement that we we focus on. So when we talked about the priority areas that we as as a school had had identified back in twenty twenty, um, we said that we wanted to make sure all of our courses had a completed curriculum in a unified format. Uh, we wanted to work on our SRBI process, the scientific scientifically research-based intervention process. So when we have students that are struggling, uh, how are we helping them? And we wanted to make sure that we have an inclusion plan that's based upon our vision of the graduate. And so those were the three areas uh, that we focused on, and the asset, sure, those sound good and go ahead and move on those. So really, the what I can share with you right now is just the preliminary thoughts that we got. Obviously, there'll be a a formalized report coming out, um, but they did give us some feedback uh, as the visit was finishing up. Uh, and uh, was able to talk to our faculty and staff a little bit about it as well. Um, and the the first thing is that it was a really positive visit. They they really enjoyed the visit. They enjoyed meeting with the students. They enjoyed meeting with the board, uh, the faculty and staff, going to different classrooms, learning about what we were doing. Um, and really, the feedback was that we were making the progress we said that we were making, what they were impressed with. Um, and that it was good that we were able to make progress, even though the last three years have been dealing with COVID. Um, and I think that uh, I I think everyone agreed, we said in our report that, sure, we would have made more progress if it hadn't been for COVID, everyone, whatever, but it is what it is. And we made some some really strong progress. So they really said with curriculum, just keep working how we're working, going through the process that we're going through. Uh, they think that we've done a nice job of really auditing where we are with our curriculum, and and we want to continue that. Uh, the SRBI process uh, didn't give us a whole lot of feedback there, but what they did say was that just continue with what we're we're doing. Where uh, we developed a a real strong process of identifying students through our A B C forums and and through uh, uh, our meetings with the counselors. And we just want to continue to to build upon that and continue to build on the supports that we give students. And then uh, with the district improvement plan and vision of the graduate, uh, this is really the first year we've been rolling the vision of the graduate out, even though it was developed in twenty twenty. Um, so they said just continue working on developing that, making sure people understand that work and uh, continuing and developing the school and district-wide improvement plans. So just to share a little bit about uh, the vision of the graduate, I think that that was one of the things again, that that really the the need the meetings and everything that we did really focused upon. Um, and again, this year is the first time we really rolled that out. We've had the vision of the graduate out there, but because of COVID, it really hasn't been something we've been concentrating on as much as really just making sure we're dealing with COVID. But the uh, um, the idea of rise, uh, we're really trying to brand ourselves with that now and and make sure people really understand what that is. Um, and so the first thing is just getting it out there. And so I just want to give you a few examples of how we're doing that. First of all, we've completely revamped the website, uh, where it's right on the front of the website, and uh, you can actually go through on the website. Uh, this is not interactive the way it is, but um, if you click on the arrows, it goes to each individual aspect of rise and tells you exactly what each one is. Uh, we've also put a nice little video of the the school right on the top there, so I think it's a lot more attractive. Um, and so when we talk about, okay, what is R, what is resilience, what does innovative learning, what is socially aware citizens uh, mean, and what does engaged communicator mean? And all those are right there on the website to start with. In addition, uh, for those of you, hopefully you can visit our school soon. Um, we really started to get the 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 idea of rise all over the school, where we have banners, uh, we have placards that talk about the vision of the graduate. Uh, they're all over the school now. Um, so we want to make sure that, you know, once, as you go through the school, you can't miss it. It's it's always there. And so uh, that's some of the things that we've started to do. Um, in addition to that, in my parent newsletters, I've been explaining the different aspects of rise, and we talked to our students about it as well. And then the last piece is is that rise can't just be sitting by itself. It can't just be like this this uh, idea that's just kind of out there. And so the teachers, one of the big biggest pieces of work we've done in the last few years is we talk to our teachers, and our teachers have identified different instructional strategies that they will commit to doing in the classroom in order to uh, support rise. Okay, so it's not just, we want students to have these things. What are we actively doing in the classroom to support each of these aspects of rocks? So when it comes to making our students more resilient, what are we doing in the classroom? Well, the student, the teachers have uh, uh, brought in this idea of feedback and reflection. How are we giving students feedback intentionally uh, to to support them being resilient, so they can go back and work on the work and make it even better? When it comes to innovative learn, well, we want to use higher order questioning in our in our classroom. So uh, we want to make sure that we're training our teachers to use higher level questioning, and we're not just asking for recall of that. For socially aware citizens, making sure that in the classroom, we have connections to the real world. And how are we connecting the work that we're doing to what students will actually see outside of the classroom? And then when it comes to engaged communicator, really trying to beef up our collaborative work in the classroom, making students, ensure students are working together. And this here is actually a slide from the first round of instructional rounds that uh, Mr. Brown actually worked on organizing. Uh, that we went into classrooms, we actually looked at the first two aspects of rise, uh, the resilient individuals and innovative learner, and we went into all forty classrooms in one day and looked at what's actually happening in the classroom. So that we could now take that information and support our teachers and design professional development to actually work with our teachers on how do you uh, better incorporate feedback or reflection? How do you better incorporate higher budgeting in the classroom? So it's not just a document that looks good. It's something that is going to uh, actually lead to uh, positive change in the classroom and support our students coming out of Bitch High School with these different skills.
And we've talked a lot about doing more of these instructional rounds where teachers and administrators get to get into the classrooms and see colleagues. I actually wrote about it in board notes. And um, I'd love for Ted to um, discuss this when he meets with, when we meet with the principals again. Um, just so they can see a concrete way that this can be tackled. You know, even having those posters in the elementary schools and the middle school, because Falcons do rise.
Absolutely. And I think also it's 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 important to note that uh, when we developed rise, it wasn't this uh, this thing that was just developed uh, in and of itself. We wanted to make sure it had connections to the I B learner profile because obviously we have I B and N Y P throughout our classroom, so it has to have a connection there as well. Um, so you could see that, you know, we lean through and we're looking at, okay, how is this related to the I B learner profile? What are the uh, strategies we want to use in the classroom? So again, it's it's not something, it's it's just happening in this class or it's just happening in that class. It happens in every single class. Um, the teachers have kind of gotten sick of the of hearing me say it, but I say every classroom, every day with every kid. Um, and that these things have to exist in that in that way. A few other things that were mentioned, um, again, these were mentioned by the committee. I don't know if they are going to be in the report or not. Um, but I think a lot of these things you're going to see um, are things that we are talking about, things that we are working on. So um, these are some other areas that had been mentioned at the last board meeting was that we are talking about the bleachers and and making sure that those are compliant. Um, they noticed it as well. I said, you know, put it in there. That's uh, I mean, if that's something we we are already working on. Um, that if you don't know, I want to talk about the pit area and the and the library has been a little bit of confusion. Uh, when the um, library, it was uh, was renovated, uh, the it was the old auditorium and the orchestra pit still kind of exists in the library. It's this little sunken area. Um, again, it's not A D A compliant, uh, it's something kind of, we're working on how to use that uh, um, a little bit. Uh, well, we're trying to be, uh, I guess, creative in how we use that area. Um, so uh, uh, instructional areas in the vintage wing, uh, the first thing that uh, the the chair did mention was that uh, while we called the vintage wing, he had said, I've been in a lot of old buildings, and that's a good-looking old building, uh, which was great to hear. And and I think it speaks to our custodial staff and our maintenance staff and all the great work that they do. Um, also, uh, Sam, I'll tell you that he's never seen such a clean boiler room in his life, uh, is what he told me. So it was great as well. So, um, so.
That's something to be said.
Well, I think that it's a, you know, they do a whole facilities tour. Sam actually was uh, led them through that, and uh, you know, they really were impressed with the condition of the building and the work that they do to keep the building in there. And so there's obviously a lot of pride in the building here, which is great. Um, but as they say, obviously, we took them to the all the rooms. They saw the culinary rooms. They saw the difficulties that we're having in there. But again, it's something that we already are talking about as we came here. Um, and then just working is something almost every school works on is how can you increase time for teachers to work together? Um, and something that we're definitely looking at as well. So just a couple of things that again were mentioned. Um, so you know, the the final thoughts in terms of the visit, uh, you know, everything we heard was positive. Everything we heard was um, that the the work that they are going to suggest is the work that we're doing, uh, which is exactly what you want. I think that's really what you're what you're looking for, that you're on the right track. Um, obviously, this is a preliminary report for you. I will have a final report for you once the the actual report comes out. Um, and uh, certainly we'll know if there's anything different in there. I can only really take from what the the chair was giving me. Uh, but everything that they told us was very positive, uh, that they really enjoyed the visit, that they really thought we were on the right track um, and doing the work that we should be doing. So just a couple of quick uh, thank yous. I just wanted to mention because this really is, uh, you know, this isn't me doing this work. This is a a whole collaborative uh, process. There's a lot of work that goes into these visits. And uh, certainly, uh, really appreciate everything that was done. Uh, but we had a lot of parents that came up and volunteered to meet with the committee and work with them and students. Uh, I dated with one of them, uh, that helped meet with the committee and and uh, and talked about our school. Uh, so a big thank you to them. Uh, Ken and Jen, uh, in the Vegas office, a huge thank you. Uh, Sam, I did what John, everybody did. I I thank you as well. Uh, but uh, Ken and Jen did an absolutely fantastic job working with all the accommodations and the meals. Uh, three days, we're feeding them, housing them, uh, you know, making sure they're getting to where they need to go, and and they were a huge help with all that. Um, certainly appreciate the Board of Education taking a little extra time to meet with them. Uh, I I have to say that they came out of that and just felt that we've got a really supportive board with that. I really appreciate it. And Superintendent Austin and Assistant Superintendent uh, Piazza, uh, were probably in my my building more than they wanted to be that week, but the uh, they 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 were there for every meeting and we needed them there. Um, uh, so one thing, you know, to keep a N E S group happy is you need to feed them, uh, and Ernie fed them good. That whole group, they they did a fantastic job, you know, they they really, uh, they kept that room stacked with uh, with all sorts of treats and uh, food and uh, drinks and everything. And again, it's just, it's really appreciated. Uh, healthy court writing, frames and Melissa Manzio, uh, were the teachers that really led the charge and writing reports, uh, which is a huge staff. And uh, this is a days-long uh, process that they go through uh, and really getting all the 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 uh, the evidence and all that. Um, they took that time. They really hooked onto their wing. Um, and uh, that's the uh, a real tough process, so I really appreciate it. And again, there isn't one faculty member that didn't didn't contribute to this somehow. So it really is a team effort, and it's the faculty, staff, and administration. Uh, the entire administration did an absolutely fabulous job. So, um, you know, it's something where, yeah, you can kind of breathe a little sigh of relief that, you know, you got through the visit. But now here's where the tough part comes, where you actually have to do the work. And and so, um, it's important that we kind of keep, as we get the report and look through it, um, really uh, develop our goals and and making sure that we're we're going on the right track for the next one. So, um, so really, I I again, I couldn't have been more pleased with with the visit. I couldn't have been more pleased with uh, the feedback that we received so far. Um, and uh, you know, I think it's just moving to the next step. So, um, again, I thank everyone for for their work with this and uh, happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions from the board? William.
So if there is a finding like the A D A with the bleachers, is there, what are we obligated to do to do? Like, how do we have to act on that? Like, if they find that specific finding, are we? Do we need to have that addressed within a time, a period of time?
Uh, so basically, the uh, I I don't know what all the rules are in regard to A D A compliance, but basically what N E S is giving you is suggested improvements. Um, so it's not like a legal entity that that tells you you have to do something. Um, now, if they thought that we were being unsafe or something, they might put that in the report, but there's nothing and they're all suggesting things were unsafe. Basically, they they're looking at it and saying, because when when the people are coming out, they're not experts on, you know, uh, facilities, uh, they're teaching, um, and so they're coming in and saying, hey, there's something you might want to take a look at and improve. Um, so it's.
But I don't think they're allowed to mandate.
Yeah, you can't really mandate.
Financial, uh.
Yeah.
It gives us a little bit of teeth, though. I I feel it doesn't give us a lot, but it could give us some teeth around the fact that we, you know, we had an accreditation happen, and they recommended us to get up up to date. I don't think it's going to move the process any quicker because this is we're in a, it's a slow process to go to referendum and and so forth and and to that.
Yes, but I think it's more alarming when they when they come out with something that you, they could give you a recommendation, and you're like, you haven't even been working on that. Um, that's when you kind of get alarmed. Nothing they've mentioned that's been anything that the board isn't already looking at. And so, um, that's what I see as success because these days, when a new set of eyes comes in and they can take a look at your school and say you're on the right track, to me, that's what that's what you want.
I agree. Any other questions? All right, hearing none, let's move on to the Assistant Superintendent report.
I want to share my screen.
Um, this, basically what I I wanted to.
Um, base- basically what I, I wanted to do uh quickly today, you know, we're, we're often talking about our calendar and our.
Thank you.
TLI days and professional development days. And so I wanted to provide a, a report to you based on what we're offering. And what the response, what the response was from staff and, and how we're going to sort of use that. To make sure we're using these days uh to the best of our abilities. Uh, a survey is given out after every professional development day and every TLI day, we try to encourage. All staff to, to participate in that survey, to give us that feedback. And we do discuss it at our brought in teaching and learning committee, which is made up of uh leadership across the district and teachers. Um, and uh, we really uh take the survey data and, and. Uh, rip it up, rip, take it apart and really look at it and put it into, you know, what worked and what didn't. So this is a brief overview. I listed at the beginning of the document and this was included in your, your board packet as well. Um, some of the things that were offered, like just so you can see the variety of things. And all of these, we try to, we do get feedback. Like I said, after each TLI day for, for suggestions and we try to take those, cause we want to give the teachers uh what they want and what they need. Um, you know, a lot of you, these you've heard discussed before, um, three steps forward, two steps back with the artwork. Um, at La Grua that, that Superintendent Austin has spoken about, um, in terms of bringing artwork. Uh, to help teach um issues of social justice. Uh, we had a lot of teacher to teacher PD, which was, which was awesome. We like to use our own experts within our district. A lot of those were technical aspects, um, and uh enhancing our curriculum and our instruction. Um, some of the things that were brought to us from the teachers that they wanted was understanding. Uh, trauma and chronic stress in students and how to work with those students. Um, teachers need some SEL two was the title uh that the presenter came up with for, you know, a session on social emotional health. For teachers and self-care. Uh, we had some, um, obviously our growing ELL population we've discussed before, so we brought in. Um, an expert from Southern Connecticut State University to work with teachers on our multi-language learners. Uh, and then you see a lot of the, again, instructional software training that. Of course, we want to put in the hands of our teachers, but we also want them to know how to use it and how to extract data from it and see if it's actually helping. Our students so that you see their Dreambox, Lexia, Teach Town, uh, all of those, um. Are instructional uh softwares. Uh, over in uh Special Education Department. Um, Denise Doolittle, uh, and I forget who helped her, but they led a workshop on uh. Specific learning disabilities and dyslexia criteria. Uh, we had some Naviance training, which is a software that all our counselors use to help for planning for students. Uh, PMT training, which helps, um, you know, with our, our students, uh, uh, in our ABA program. So, uh, a lot of different things that, um, were hopefully beneficial to our teachers. Um, the data showed overall, uh, very positive responses to, to what was offered. Uh, I'm sorry about the colors. I wasn't able to change them and I know. Um, there's blue, you know, we're concentrating on the dark blue and the orange, um, in terms of the satisfaction. Uh, they used blue again. Um, for the very dissatisfied uh section. But again, you, you see it's about, um. You know, seventy-six percent and overall, uh, we got two hundred and sixty-five responses, uh, that should have been on here too. Uh, out of about the four hundred and fifty uh certified staff. So just about sixty percent, which is a pretty decent uh. Uh, response rate and higher than uh previous years. So it really gave us some, some, a good picture of how people felt. So overall, and we did, we did. Break this up between the morning and afternoon session on, on, on the PD day. They had a three-hour session in the morning and a three-hour session in the afternoon. Um, so most of these workshops were offered twice over the course of the day with, with teachers uh switching out. This is the morning data. Um, um, and this again is an overall picture, not individual to each workshop. Um, again, you can see uh from this graph that uh people felt the content was, was relevant. Uh, which of course is something we want to see. We don't want to waste people's time. Uh, we want it to be relevant to their professional responsibility. So we saw, you know, over eighty-six percent uh did find it relevant. Uh, then we want to know how they feel and they use this knowledge in their classroom. Um, do they feel confident in their ability to now use this new knowledge? Um, and again, you see there where you, you know, there is a little bit more. Uh, so we, we will break that data down by the workshops and see what we need to offer a little bit more in, um, to give that support. Um, but we saw, you know, a little dip there with sixty-three percent of the people felt pretty confident, uh, where there's uh some. Twenty-one percent feel somewhat confident where others, uh, maybe not so confident. So we'll, we'll continue. And some of these workshops lended itself to that. Where this was just sort of part one, um, and in an ongoing workshop. Uh, we want to know if we have quality presenters. Um, so we asked if. They thought the presenters were knowledgeable and helpful and well-prepared. Again, it was a combination of outside, bringing people from, you know, outside experts. In and using our internal experts as well. Um, again, a majority, um, were pleased with uh the presenters that we were able uh to bring in. Uh, the afternoon workshops, again, it, it was basically the same things offered. Uh, multiple times throughout the day. Uh, the afternoon sessions saw similar, um, in terms of overall satisfaction. Uh, the content being relevant uh to their responsibilities overwhelmingly, which is great to see. Um, again, in terms of their confidence in, in, um. Using this new knowledge and skill, uh, definitely some areas uh to improve upon. So we will look at that. And then again, um, most people thought that the presenter was knowledgeable. Um, we also did give them a chance to make some uh comments. Uh, and leave some comments. So there's definitely some areas that we, we will improve upon. Um, you bring, you know, a lot of times when you bring people from the outside, uh, they're recommended by others. Um, who have either seen them before or other districts, districts have used. Uh, we did get some feedback unfortunately on some of the workshops. Um, you know, I'll share just some of the, the positive and negative, uh, I'm sorry, in areas of improvement that we heard uh from staff. Um, most of the positive feedback team, you know, special ed teachers really appreciated the time that they had. To further explore CTSEGS, which we've heard um about uh since the year started. Um, most people uh really um appreciated the time when they met with their grade level teams and departments. Uh, that collaboration time is always appreciated by staff. Uh, they appreciated the technical workshops, the Dreambox, the Lexia, the Cormetheon Board. Um, anything, again, those are, you know, those skills that they can use, you know, next day in their classes. Um, they, they thought the tiered levels of intervention was a great workshop. Well, one of the workshops just. Walk through the uh levels one, two and three of our, our intervention program. Um, and those were offered to, uh, you know, to all staff and it really appreciated. The ELL, the multi-language learners. Um, uh, PD was also very well received. Um, and we are, and that is an ongoing professional development that's going to continue throughout the year. Uh, and they made note that they really appreciated having multiple, you know, choices. Um, to choose from uh throughout their day. Um, some of the areas that we'll improve upon, uh, teachers said it would, would have been great to send some of the resources and materials ahead of time. Uh, to teachers that they can review. I know some of the presenters from the outside did bring in some, some articles and things which just took time out of the workshop. Uh, to get to. Um, people want us to really tap into our district resources more for presenters. And use our experts and, and they, cause they like that teacher to teacher work. So I'm going to continue to explore ways to. Find out all the skills that we have in districts so we can, um, use that to teach each other. Um, some people made some su- suggestions uh to vet the presenters a little bit more thoroughly and check references. Uh, some of the presenters weren't very well received. Um, some were doing, you know. The old depth by PowerPoint, you know, very dense slides and reading, uh, you know, in a three-hour workshop. Run that way could.
I think there were people that were recommended to us, but I don't know how well we vetted them.
Yeah, so we're going to sort of look at our process a little bit. Um, so, uh, and some, and they asked for, uh, some of the presenters in workshops. Uh, lacked concrete strategies to use in the classroom, uh, like the trauma and the SEL workshops. Um, were very basic overviews, level one surface type of stuff that maybe we've, we've had before and people understood and they were really looking for concrete. Strategies to use in the classroom. So we'll, um, so we'll, like I said, we'll explore, um, different, uh, different ways to bring that to them. Um, so that's just some of the feedback. And I did include also in the charts. Um, our pair professionals also received some uh professional development. Now they, um, they received it in the areas. And again, they had asked. To be brought into the loop on a lot of the district initiatives that our certified staff has been doing specifically. In our DEI initiatives, um, in our social emotional learning. So we were able to bring in Val Davis, um, who did, um, her presentation on unconscious bias. Um, for all of our paraprofessionals. Uh, we had some in-house, uh, teacher to teacher work with uh Jen Belmonte and Jen Thurland and Heather Parsons. Who provided a workshop on social emotional learning. Uh, and we also had uh strategy workshops on behavior management and situational awareness uh with our students. Um, so again, we polled, we have about a hundred and eighty-five uh pairs in the district, a hundred and thirty-one responded, so about seventy-one percent, which is, which is great. Um, and you can see, um, again, we're focusing mostly on the blue and the uh red in terms of overall satisfaction. Um, so you, you know, again, overall positive in terms of, uh, the professional development that, uh, they received. Um, they overwhelmingly, um, thought it was relevant. Um, to their, um, to their professional responsibilities. Uh, this, you know, you see the, the, the gap of somewhat confident kind of room here about, again, being confident about their ability to use new knowledge. So again, these, these workshops were meant to be sort of introductions to some of these topics that we will continue to offer throughout the year. Uh, and they really loved, you know, our, our presenters, uh, Val Davis was, was very well received and, and as well as our in-house. Uh, that, you know, the teacher to teacher training was always very well received. So, uh. So again, that's just an overall look. Again, we want you to know what we're doing for our teachers, uh, and the quality of the workshops that we're bringing. Uh, what their response is to it. And again, what we're, you know, we're continually trying to improve. So we will continue to survey, um, as best we can, uh, encourage their responses and then act off those.
That's one of our bigger days, the regional day.
The regional day.
Ready for March two.
And that was right, you know, for me personally, that is kind of the first one, cause last year we've kind of left it up for the buildings. Uh, as we were still coming out of, uh, you know, our COVID protocol. So. Um, the next full day, PD day will be in March. So we want to clarify for that as well.
Any other questions from the board? Matthew?
Yeah, um, the overall satisfaction, they were twenty percent disagreed. Were not somewhat or very dissatisfied. Did their comments eliminate anything for you?
Yes, um, and that, that's where the comment I made about some of the presenters. Um, not giving concrete strategies to use in the classroom, that seemed to be the largest complaint. Um, and again, there were two workshops where we brought people from the outside and, and one was the. Um, uh, the one that seemed to generally read off the PowerPoint and it wasn't very engaging. Um, and that one didn't, and that was the, the trauma-based one where they wanted more concrete examples of how to. Use those strategies in the classroom and then the SEL for teachers. Um.
She just kept saying retire.
Again, looking, looking at, you know, strategies for the teachers to use on themselves. And, and the presenter seemed to generally, um, acknowledge that there was a problem, which of course, we already knew. Um, those seem to be the, the, the largest complaints.
When people are dissatisfied, it's usually they're not engaged. The material they already know, it's just like in the classroom with students. You have to give new, relevant, rigorous, interesting, engaging work all the time. So the topic seems very relevant and very engaging.
Yes. It was topics they wanted and, and it was disappointing to, to. I was in some of those, you know, as I was making my way around the district that day and, and it was disappointing at the, um, you know, the execution. Exactly.
Right. Yeah, I think like vetting it a little more. It's always good to have seen someone like Val Davis came to us. And, um, Lori had met her and had been in her presentation on unconscious bias. And we've had her back every year for like three or four years. So she has almost seen everyone, including the board. But not necessarily some of the newer members of the board, but she's truly engaging about always checking your bias, cause we all have them. And making sure that we're understanding and. So that was good. So that's a, for instance, a win. Uh, any other questions, comments? All right, moving on. Thank you. So Ken, just because, you know, we're going to have a lot of you in the month of January and February, we, we thought we would just kind of like, you know. Bring it back into the fold. Yeah.
Let's check in. Um. So on our attachment number two is our, uh, on your code summary. And this shows that we're similar to our prior month's reports.
Thank you.
Anticipating, uh, in slight surplus or slight, uh, projected unexpendable balance. Uh, sixty-five thousand seven seventy-eight, uh. And, uh, it's made up of, there's some unfavorable variances, uh, budget in transportation, in retirement and, and heating oil. Uh, but the offset by favorable variances in salaries, special tuition and supplies.
And we're still saying monitor those, you know, individual site budgets and hold back. Twenty-five percent, it doesn't mean that we can't release that as we get further into the spring and we'll probably do so, but. Um, they're just being good custodians of our school budget, knowing there are so many cost increases this year. Some we knew and some we didn't know. A hundred and twenty-six for the transportation.
And then there, there's two buses, two additional buses then.
And they were specifically the smaller buses for our special needs students that needed wheelchair and. You know, we just found that we had more needs than we had previously had the year before.
I'm really impressed that we were able to cope with. Those three items were just shy of four hundred thousand dollars. And, uh, what I found remarkable is the increase and the positive increase with tuition payments. And I'm wondering how many tuition students we have that have accounted for that. That's, that's very good insight of the district.
They, I think they've aged out in some cases and we've also brought back students who were in very pricey outside districts to come back. Because we have the programming for them here. So that again, I have to give credit to Denise Ulo and her team.
Yeah, yeah, a people person of us continually working on, uh, trying to minimize those costs and so. And, and, and it's a, it's a little unpredictable. So when we were setting this budget last year. You, you don't really know exactly who you're going to have, uh, come this year.
Right.
So we make the best estimate that we can, um, uh, I think that we, uh. Looking at, looking at, at this point, it looks like we, uh, over budgeted a little bit, but, um, that's fine. So.
Thank you. Um, I looked at the thing, our budget is July first to June thirty, if I correct. So. These numbers stipulating that they cover through November thirtieth, that represents only five twelfths of the year. We're not going to incur two more buses, so that piece won't double. But the other two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, mas amenos. Is that a fair expectation of what we're going to have in additional expenses for the next, the balance of the year?
Yeah, so when we estimated, uh, for instance, the heating oil and, oil and the diesel, we're looking forward, knowing how. We, we had some, uh, some supplies of diesel fuel left over from the prior year. So we're ready to take that into account. And then we extrapolated how much we're going to need beyond that after current crisis. And so that's, that's what we're going with that number. So. I would hope that those numbers would not get in first, the one thing I write down.
Beth?
Thank you, Kim.
Absolutely.
Can, can you explain, um, line sixty-four for tutors? Why, why did we spend so much more money, if I'm reading it correctly, on tutors? Three hundred and twenty-one thousand six hundred and fifty-four dollars.
So we, we've had a, a little bit of a tough time getting, uh, enough, uh, pairs into, into the positions. Uh, and in order to cover that, what we've done is we, we've hired, um, uh, more tutors, uh, which, which is a higher, a higher cost. But they're actually, um, more of a, uh, para is more of a one-to-one with, with, with the student. Whereas the tutors, we're able to go more of a two-to-one, uh, so, uh.
Or a small group.
Or a small group.
And they're able to provide instruction as well. So that's a real benefit. We've called them special education tutors. We've also put in some social emotional learning tutors in the buildings. Um, some of those are paid for though. The social emotional learning tutors are paid for by our Besser.
Yeah.
Where these special ed tutors are definitely helping to cover the bases. Um, that were needed through an IEP, but they're able to also instruct and they're able to take on small groups of students instead of just one-to-one.
Yeah. So, so what you, what's reflected here is you're just seeing, uh, uh, the increased number of tutors, but there is a correspondent. Ish, uh, decrease in, in paraprofessional costs.
Are we, um, thinking about, are, are you thinking about continuing to keep these tutors? Or are you, or, or do you want to hire more paraprofessionals?
Well, we wanted to fill all those positions for paraprofessionals. Certainly, we're getting ready to negotiate. with the para union coming up soon. Um, we know that there's a competitive cost rate out there and other districts around us are paying more. So it's a real fine line, but I would say that we have been very pleased with this model. People have asked me about this model. Um, and that the piece of the extra instruction for the student where a para really, her job is, or his job is not to instruct, it's to really help the child move through their day and you know, make sure they're focused on their learning. Um, the teacher does the instruction, but with this, we're really getting extra tutoring on top of keeping the child focused and, and in direction. They're actually meeting with small groups and teaching them.
Okay, so, so you like having more tutors than paraprofessionals? And, and you're thinking about maintaining this?
If, if we need to. If we need to, I mean, certainly we wanted to be able to fill the positions of paras, but that was just not happening and we needed to take care of these children per their IEP.
Okay, but you think this model is more beneficial?
We've noticed that it's been very, very beneficial. The principals have talked about it. The special educators have talked about it. Um, so.
Okay. Yes, if it's beneficial to the students, that's great.
Yeah, that's how I feel, Beverly. Yeah.
So does that influence how we think about negotiations with the paraprofessionals? And does that also influence about how we think about our budget?
Well, the para union also hosts the tutors. So realize they're underneath the same union, a tutor, but a tutor has to have um you know, a bachelor's degree and sometimes they are certified teachers. We've been fortunate. So um or they've been retired teachers and sometimes special educators. So um depending on, you know, who we've been able to enlist.
Beverly, are you, are, did that answer your, all of your questions? Okay. Matthew, did you have a comment? And then Andrea?
I, I think this is for Susan. And how do you accommodate that or counter that in an IEP? Let's say that you have a, a student coming in from out of town, or even if you've had a student who's had a parent all along. But now, how do you, what's the language in the IEP?
That's a very good question. Um, if a child really needs support throughout their day, you usually see it's one-to-one and they have thirty hours of coverage. But there are many children that go to a resource room or need some reorientation or some extra help and support. But they are shared, they're with a shared peer para and they have fewer hours during the week that they need. So that's when you're able to share. And we've always been able to share. We've used paras to share. They usually have to go back and forth to different classrooms. We might cluster two or three kids together in a classroom. But with the tutor, they're actually able to bring them together and do a reading group with them.
Right, and I like the strategy. I just wanna know about the reality of it.
So it, yeah, it's pretty specific. You see one situation or the other.
Any other questions?
I have one more.
Absolutely. Oh, please.
Ken, is there anything that we should be concerned about at this point? As far as the budget is concerned?
Not this year.
Well, I think we should continue to be concerned about inflation and the impact that's having on, uh, on our ability to, to get what we need uh to, to, to do the job we do. You know, as we go through the year, um, and we start fusing up the funds that we have, I, I'm a little concerned about the end of the year uh and hoping that uh these funds last. We tried to take that into consideration here. I think from a salary perspective, I don't think that there's a concern, because we, we pretty much know who we have. Uh, and that's gonna fit within what we've budgeted, but I'm a little concerned about inflation.
I think we all are.
Yeah.
This could make our budget, this could make our budget time pretty. Yes, pretty, pretty.
Pretty.
Yeah, it's gonna be a lot to go through. All right.
Kim? Yes, Liz. I'm sorry. Your hand that you raise is actually in the same corner where it gets tucked. I think that that's your TV is. And I could, I, I really can't see it. So you're gonna have to.
I'll just yell. That's fine.
All right.
Hey, Ken, um, I'm looking at supplies. Um, are, are we good with paper?
Um, so there, there was a paper shortage uh over this past summer. Um, it seems to have alleviated a little bit. Um, uh, the costs have come down a little bit. Uh, we've also put some measures in place to try and limit our usage of paper. Uh, so I, I think, I think we're okay.
Okay. We're doing a lot of online forums, online report cards. We've asked teachers to do more like the old-fashioned black book notebooks and things like that, that they can write in instead of just ditto's. And we used to call them ditto's, but you know what I mean?
Yeah, I know what you mean.
Graphic organizers.
Yeah, worksheets. Okay, I just, um, I was just kind of wondering, I, this, I had heard around that, you know, there's a paper shortage and yet people still are just, you know, people aren't paying attention to it. And so I was just concerned that I can remember midterms, we had, we had paper, finals, we didn't. And so I wanna make sure that uh we have what we need to get through the year.
Yeah, we, uh, I, I, I think, I think we've passed a little bit of a um pump, if you wanna call it, uh, regardless of paper, but uh we, we can always do better. We should continue to, to work on uh less paper, uh, or more digital resources.
Thank you. Thanks, Kim.
Absolutely. Any further questions? If not, let's go to the um health insurance report. And Sam, now you've done such a good job.
So here is the health insurance report. Through, uh, through, through October of twenty twenty-two.
To be honest, Shaw.
Uh, but for the month of October, um see it, we were at seventy-seven point three percent of our estimated, uh, anticipated uh claim amount. Uh, this, this is in line with what we expect. Uh, this is the be, towards the beginning of the year. Uh, employees are still working through their, their deductibles. Uh, so this, this, this trend that we're seeing is, is uh predictable and what we would have expected. Uh, we should probably start to see this start to pick up as deductibles start to get used up. Uh, and um the plan would take on more at that point. Uh, but for on a year-to-date basis, we're at seventy-five point three percent of uh anticipated. Uh, the town is at uh seventy-four point nine percent. So we're in line with their, uh, with their results as well. So um, I feel like we're in, in decent shape with regards to uh health insurance plans.
And we imagine that blue line, which is right about a million dollars.
Just about, yeah.
Uh, last year, you indicated that you expected uh things to pick up and balance out by the end of the year. And I seem to recall, you said you thought COVID had something to do that, do it. Is that uh it's elephant in the python gone?
Well, uh, I would say it's not uh gone, but what we were, what we were experiencing last year was folks postponing. It had an impact. The, the curve didn't look quite like this. Uh, it looked a little, little more of uh bigger impacts, because as they postpone and then they, they push it to the time uh later. But I think, I think we are past the majority of, of the impact of anybody postponing or delaying and sort of doctor visits. And that we're kind of on it all the, more of an order.
Any other further questions? Any, I don't even know if that was a correct sentence that came out of my mouth. Any further questions? All right, hearing none, let us move on to Mr. Kilpatrick. That's you. Thank you for creating a much better climate in.
So, you know, is those done on a memory or graph machine?
Remember those?
No.
They was purple.
Yes, and the ink will go a little bit.
So, um, so I, I need to inform you that uh winter has officially arrived. We had snow this night. Oh, there's a little bit of that problem, but uh it worked out pretty well. And everybody arrived safely and got home safely. So that's the important part. So uh, we also met with the Miasque team last week, that Dr. Kennedy and I actually took a group round, showed them server rooms. As you've heard, the boiler room, um, and lots of the other uh, uh the brains of the building or the nerve center, whatever, all those things that are unseen uh by most of us as we walk through the building. And uh had, had nice talks with them. And, and while we were taking that tour with a group that I had, um, they uh continually questioned me on rise, which I had no idea what it meant. Each, each letter uh obviously has a positive, is a positive attribute that we want to have kids to have. But um I also came in during Thanksgiving weekend, so that they could put all these posters up. And now when I walk into the building, you see these posters over there that say rise. Just the fact that that word rise is down the end of that hallway. I, I find it to be a, a positive method, just the word rise itself.
And Falcons rise.
Absolutely. And, and, and of course, the, the other thing that uh Ted talked about briefly was the pit at the media center in, in the high school. And we did talk about possibility, we're, we're looking at the possibility of an electric or a hydraulic lift that uh, uh, we might be able to get down those stairs. Uh, there isn't enough room to do a ramp. The ramp would have to be about seventy feet long. So it would take up too much room in that pit or around it. So we're looking at the possibility of, of getting a lift.
Just like you would do to a swimming pool.
Acceptable.
Just like you would do with a swimming pool, to get swimmers in the pool.
Yep. So hopefully we'll be able to come up with a, a solution to that problem uh fairly soon. Uh, also, um, Ken, um, did most of the work. Um, but Ken and I submitted a, a grant uh application, two grant applications to the state. Uh, both for the H-back uh the vintage part of Fitch High School and for Charles Barnum School on December first. Um, and the state, um, uh has determined that they, they really rolled this thing out pretty quickly and most of the distance, we're not able to um put the whole project together. Um, due to uh timing or uh town councils, uh referendums, all these types of things. So uh, they've given us some additional time and I think, I believe that we used the date of February twenty eighth throughout the application. So we'll be going uh to the facilities and finance, and facilities meeting, meeting at the next meeting and uh asking them to move forward on some of those items that we need to uh address. Uh, in case we get this, uh, these grants. A grant will be um approved sometime in, in January. So we'll find out during January whether we get the grant. And we can move on, uh, we can move forward on some of these other things uh through January and February to get that stuff in mind to get that grant. And I guess the last thing is that uh we're, we're just uh working on this week, started working on uh, uh, a list of projects that we're doing work during winter break, whether it's the cleaning of our buildings. Uh, some other uh smaller projects that we can do in the classroom that we can't do when the kids are in the classroom. So we'll be working on that.
And we also are gonna be voting on the CIPs that we discussed in an earlier committee of the whole.
Any other questions for Sam or comments? Sam, I, actually, I do have a question for you. Um, so do, do you regularly attend the um the permanent school building committee?
Yep.
Okay.
There was no meeting last month. And a message just went out today, I believe, from uh Robert Austin, uh Bob, uh, Bob Austin of France, uh, asking if there are any uh new items uh for the committee for this third thing. Greg Hanover, the uh public works director, said there was nothing from his viewpoint at this point. And of course, we have some stuff to discuss at our next finance facility. So I said it would be for the next meeting of more than likely.
Right. Um, I'm gonna make sure that, um it, now specifically because we had, um I'm gonna say it wrong, Niask? Um, um, has said that they're concerned about the vintage area and also on the bleachers. That I, I wanna make sure that we continue to kind of make sure that that's in people's minds as we, as we think about that in the Charles Barnum. Um, and so I know that um Dean had been assigned that some committee and I'm going to, um, he's not here. Um, but I am gonna send out a note to him to make sure that he can um attend those, so that we can have, not just you, but you can have one of the board members also attend the meeting to get some of this stuff.
Yeah, well, the town council will have to uh name a building committee for the age back uh projects if, if, if we get the grants.
Okay. Would it be the same? Would it be the same people?
Uh, it would be that committee, or they could name the uh board that, that, they've done that in the past. I suspect that these would be uh large enough that they would give them to the town committee.
Okay.
Any other questions? If not, let's move on. And uh I think we're at the committee report, um, policy.
I have a question. Where's Chris?
He's on. He's ready for us when we're ready for him.
With four policies coming before you. Thank you. For a second reading, uh, uh, a second reading and I'm hoping they just spoke to him.
Okay.
And then, um, for our next meeting, which is tomorrow night, we're looking at graduation requirements and the mentoring program.
Okay.
Policy for that.
Oh, cool. Wow, great. Um, Liz for curriculum? I hear you better when you're not muted.
Thanks, Kim. I appreciate it. All right, uh, we had quite a packed um meeting last time and our next committee meeting is the nineteenth at six o'clock and it's remote. So uh, if anybody wants to pop in, you're welcome. But we are, um, we had Tim Riscull and Chelsea Courtwright come to speak to us about the EMT class. And we've asked for more information on that. Anne Keefe for Botnik, she came and uh presented the IB uh Careers Pathway Programs Core and uh discussed personal and professional skills, reflective project, service learning and language development. And then we had an update on the magnet, uh, magnet curriculum work that was being done at the elementary level by Emma Rotner. So um, there was very busy for an hour. Uh, we will be looking carefully at this next meeting. Um, Phil, just make sure I'm right. I think we put down Ed Rising. Did you put Ed Rising on this month, this week, this next week's agenda?
I did.
Okay, I couldn't remember, because it's just been a zoo here. So Ed Rising and the NROTC um curriculum as well. So we've got quite a bit. There's a, a number of things coming up. We're trying to make sure that we have all our ducks in a row and that people are following the proper procedures.
Any questions for Liz? I should have said that for policy. Any question for policy? All right, um, finance and facilities, Jay?
Uh, yes, uh, we met on December sixth. Uh, we discussed um the budget history. Um, with an eye toward uh what we'll start to be doing next month. Uh, we reviewed the school safety security plan and the costs associated with that. Uh, Mr. Kilpatrick introduced this, um, the background on the HVAC grant. Uh, we got an update on the uh GMS field lights that may, uh, with some luck, go in next year. Um, after quite a, a, a delay. Um, speaking of delays, we discussed the solar panels. Which my understanding is, we've been talking about this for what, at least a year? Um, and it's finally gotten through the legal review. Yeah, I'd love to see what issues actually came up over the past year legally between the town of Groton and an agency of the state that would take a year to iron out and how much we paid for those legal fees, but it is what it is. And then finally, we got an update on the bus contract.
Liz?
Yeah, Jay, did you guys ever discuss the charging stations at the middle school? Remember I gave you?
That was the last, yeah, that was last month. We we discussed that. Yeah, we reported back on that at the last.
I'm sorry.
So basically, what happens with those charging stations is, I guess the state of Connecticut paid for them to be put in. Our understanding is that we're paying for everybody who who plugs in. And every school is different in terms of how much. But the majority of the board members felt that the cost to the district was irrelevant. Once we see the increases in electric rates, I know mine is scheduled to double. But each building's on a different contract, so that will roll in at different times. So I know you had mentioned that there was some concern that. You know, those are being plugged in like outside of hours and, you know, who's paying for all that? So the bottom line is the district pays for all those electric vehicles that are being plugged in.
Thanks, Jay. I I apologize. I I think I was not here that day, so I appreciate you giving a recap.
Rita?
Hi, Jay. I have, Mike, I'm gonna follow up with Liz's question. And and just ask what it would be the another alternative if the Board of Education didn't pay for the charging stations that are at our school?
Well, I had raised the question of, you know, Tesla puts in stations that that people have to actually. Insert a credit card and pay. And I had asked whether that was an option. The other members of the finance committee just felt that the the amount was minimal and not worth worrying about. And it's for the greater good of the of the town. I still think that that's something that, you know, should be pursued further. With rising electric rates.
Well, and because there are so many electric cars, the Nissan Leaf, the, you know, the Chevy, there are so many coming on the market. BMW that. I also feel that maybe we should do something and Tesla is opening up their charging stations. Before they were only for Tesla cars, but now other cars are gonna be able to charge there if they have an adapter. So it's 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 really something, you know, to to think about a little further. As more people start driving electric cars and hopefully we'll have electric buses in the future. And I had one other. Other question for you, Jay, and that was about the busing contract. So are you exploring other bus companies?
Well, that actually is a function of going out to bid. So rather than a negotiation, that went out to bid. All the bids have come back and our understanding is that Ken and his team. And I assume Sam are analyzing the bids that came back in and will now make a contractual decision.
Well, in in before, in the past, except the last time, the negotiation committee for the Board of Education is involved. In the the bids, because it, you know, we, the Board of Education is the one that really pays for the. Busing, the buses. So I I would like to know. How we could be involved so that the board, you know, we're we're included in this process.
I'd have to defer to Ken and Susan on that because, again, this was done through. The board and I believe the town's bidding process.
I also think that we will be involved because that we'll have to have a presentation of. Of the contract that they that they gave us and the reason why they have chosen that.
No, but that would be a done deal. We, the board needs to see before. It would be because it would come up for a vote. So it'd be nice to see the, all the bids. And have some input into, you know, discussing with the different but. Busing companies that, you know, have put in bids. You know, what their plan is for seat belts, camera monitors, just electrification, just so many things. The same way like that we need to start thinking about, you know, our law firm and, you know, that's also part of the negotiation team. When we put that, you know, out to the pub, you know, out for, to have a different or the same law firm.
Actually, that's not correct. It actually goes through the town and we can have the town.
No, no, I've I've sat through many negotiations with law firms and they come in and present to the Board of Education. The town has their own lawyer. Our lawyer is paid for by the Board of Education.
I'll have to get more information about that.
I think the only thing that the town has to okay our lawyer, is that correct, Rita?
Yes, at the at the end, yeah.
That's all. Thanks. Thanks, Jay.
Jay, I read that there was a community in southeastern Connecticut that had a private vendor that offered to install. Charging stations at no cost and then business model with had little ads. It was rejected by the town for reasons I don't probably do now, but have we looked at a private vendor? In addition to, I mean, so we could have more stations available and that would be a self-supporting operation would be any cost to the district.
I'm having a little difficulty with the audio. But the finance committee. Discuss this at the meeting before last. There didn't seem to be any interest. In pursuing that further, but, you know, personally, I would like to see us investigate. How we can recover some of the. The the cost, especially if we add more of these stations, but certainly for the ones that currently exist. Especially given. The large electric rate increases that are coming down the road. And Ken is actually gonna get back to us with a list of which contracts expire when for each. Building and what the rates are now and then what they could possibly go up to.
Sam looks like he can get get a point and then I'm going to recognize Beverly and then Liz. Yeah.
Yeah, so I, Jay, I think I. I I told you at the last finance committee meeting, or at least I can't remember which meeting it was. But I'm talking with the town, they have somebody that's going to be putting a meter on some of their charging stations to see exactly how much it costs. And I want to do that at least one of our schools. See if I can get that meter put on here so we can see exactly what it's take, how much time it's taken and what the cost of that is. So I know that both Mystic River and. Thaves River, there are cars parked there all weekend long. So I think those would be the two schools that I that I'd like to see something that I'm have have those meters put on. So I'm working on that in the meantime.
Thank you. And I believe that's what Liz was, you know, what precipitated the whole thing about our putting it on the agenda the last time. Was the fact that during school hours, usually nothing's connected to those. And then when schools are closed, there are vehicles there all all night and all weekend. And so it would be good to know the how much money we're talking about.
Beverly?
Yes, thank you, Kim. That was my question. What was the cost? Because if I remember correctly, I think, Sam, you said the cost wasn't that much. But my memory could, you know, be all foggy. But that was my question, what was the cost?
We're gonna find out.
Yeah, I I don't, I don't recall specifically saying that. But I do know that when I talked to the town initially about putting meters on these stations. That they determined for themselves that it wasn't cost effective to put them actual meters on on those units. It was gonna cost quite a bit with those on, but I don't, again, I don't know what those numbers are either. But I think the first step is to see how much it's costing us first and then we can go from there.
Liz?
Yeah, I have a question. I don't know if you could see it in the chat. It says, could we shut off the circuit breaker to charge car charging stations after hours? Is that possible? And also, I think that I hear a lot of interest in this topic. So I think it still needs some attention. So I look forward to hearing more information about this.
Thank you, Liz. Rita, I did see your hand up at one point.
Okay.
Oh, you're just waving? Okay.
No, my question was answered.
Oh, I thought you were waving. Communications.
Communication Committee met today prior to this meeting. We had our first working session on reviewing the twenty sixteen.
Excuse me, Matthew, can you speak into the speaker? It's hard to hear you. I know we should be there in person, but we're not.
My booming voice on Kim, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, the communication committee met earlier today just before this meeting. We had our first working session of taking the twenty sixteen communication plan and working to review it. To hopefully come back to you in a month or two or maybe three, but not longer. With a proposed twenty twenty-three, twenty-five communication plan.
Wow, that's good. You guys are really, really busy. The the finance and facilities, communications, curriculum and policy, the amount of work that you guys do is just pretty amazing. Thank you for your hard work. Like that's, like that's, like that's the whole purpose of like having a board to have these little subcommittees. That do a lot of the heavy lifting. So thank you very much, all of you who are on those committees, but and also who are leadership to those committees. Thank you, thank you, thank you. The others is negotiation. So we are, if you can see on the agenda. We have where we're going to kind of hopefully go forward with the administration. We were supposed to do that last week, month, but we didn't. And so that's gonna be on. And as. And as Susan mentioned earlier in the meeting, we are going to be having the pair of professionals for the, is it the one year? Or to? We're gonna go for four years. We're hoping to go to four years. And so, yeah, because we did a a jump over, that's not the word, but you know what I mean? We we added a year to the last contract. And so now that's up. And Rita, my my promise to you is that I will have it, looking at the historical around the bus contracts. And then however it comes out, we will talk about that as a board to see how we want to move forward. However, I do hear an agenda topic coming out of this, which is where are we in the process of the bus contracts? And whether that needs to be an executive session or not, so that the board can get a sense of what the business department and transportation is looking at. And maybe that's could be a time that we can also, as a board, just kind of talk about what our concerns are or not our concerns about that. Does that sound like that's fair?
Yes, I think you'll find with the history, except for the last contract, which was five years ago.
Okay.
Board of Education always was involved with the negotiation, the negotiation committee actually looked at the bids and presented it to the board.
Okay. I'm sure you're right. So let me just get the historical data. Learn?
Learn, we had an excellent meeting last Thursday, December eighth. Caves Executive Director and General Counsel Patrice McCarthy presented. And she talked about the legislator having a possible magnet tuition reimbursement for districts, which would be wonderful. Where we wouldn't, you know, our town would not have to pay for students who attended magnet schools in other towns. So we need to contact our legislators and push for that. And the second thing is that she said that feminine hygiene products now should be in all bathrooms, boys and girls. And I was wondering, I was gonna ask Susan whether or not that is the case in our bathrooms.
I would have to check on that. That's that's a law that's come through January first, is that correct?
Starting January first.
Right, I'll have to find that out. I have heard about it, but I don't know if we've already started doing that or not.
And the and the second, which I I thought was really interesting, was Learn had a group of people that went to Griswold. High School and they observed their state-of-the-art room for esports. Does every, does anybody know what esport is?
Yeah, it's the video, like basketball, soccer and and such.
Yeah, and and they actually, they're electronic sports.
Right.
And I guess every. Districts can compete with other districts at four o'clock one day of a week. But this is supposedly a phenomenal room. And they they said that Fitch was also had been there to observe it. So I thought that was interesting and Fitch and one other town, maybe Waterford. But with this gaming, they also, it's not just, you know, kids playing around, but they learn coding and design. And skill development. So it's not just like they're sitting there playing games during this period.
So he can, he can say, he can tell you that he has been there and we have our own program as well.
That's great. Hi.
I I will, I will not elaborate. We have a board member who actually has a child on our team at Fitch. In their inaugural season this year, so he chooses to elaborate, certainly.
No pressure.
I will keep this very brief, but this is a passion of mine and it has been since twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen. When I started a team in London, pretty London public schools. And then we eventually were able to convince Carissa Nyhoff at the time, who was the head of CIC, to recognize it. So Connecticut was actually the first state to recognize esports as a, as an official sanctioned competitive group. But Rita, I think you you hit the nail on the head when you were talking about how it's not just games for games' sake. We started really, because we were trying to build around the. The four Cs program that we had in London at the time is teaching critical thinking, collaboration, communication, creativity. Kind of in a horizontal curriculum across the traditional silos of math, science, social studies. So we kind of mapped out the the Fitch program and hopefully soon to be rotten middle school program. Along the lines of skill development and socializing, team building. Certainly, there is a component of it where we want to be competitive and win and so forth. But that's, that's really secondary to the the idea of socialization and skill building and also giving students. Who may not be the first to sign up for some of the traditional activities, to be able to be part of a team at school, after school, with a coach. Wearing the school colors and so forth and so on. So the game is important, but don't tell the students I said this. To me, it's a secondary to the the experience, the skills, the experience that they can have. To hopefully make them better citizens and more participatory and so forth. So.
Yeah, I think.
And the game's a lot of fun, too. I watch more of them on Sundays than NFL football these days. It's just something I've grown into because the kids brought me there. So it's it's a brave new world and I think it's a really important piece of the overall picture. But thank you.
And I also was told that colleges gave out eighteen million dollars in scholarships. For, there's, so there's a lot of dollars out there if you are very good at this.
The dollars and even more so, even if there are dollars, it's a way to get accepted in a reach school that you may not have been able to get into. If they see you as talented and able to fulfill a role. So yes, absolutely. It's a, it's a benefit for some of our students to get that stretch goal.
So anyway, I was fascinated to learn about this. I I didn't know we we were doing it at Fitch and really happy that we are. So thank you. That's it.
Really reassuring about the insurance.
Sorry, I have to say one more. I apologize for just jumping right in. The one, one of the main issues with esports though, too, is our gender diversity within those ranks. It is predominantly a male-dominated sport traditionally, traditionally all this, you know, ten plus years of existence. I'm very happy to report that the, that, that the team that did quite well this year, they just missed the playoffs. There's five starters, three were female students, two male students in the starting five. So I was very excited about that, which. It's the way it should be and it should look in my personal estimation, but it isn't always the case. And it's something we've been working on in the community overall, and made accessible to all students, not just a particular type of student or or identified student.
And I think also. Right, and I think it also gives students, you know, that may. you know, that may not, you you need a reason to come to school. Sometimes it's because you're playing football or basketball or in a play. But this gives some students another reason to, you know, it's not all about academics.
You're right. Thank you. Thank you, Rita.
Welcome.
Anything else from Learn? Um, so the town, uh, Town Council, the RTM Board of Ed and City Council, January, ready for this, January 12th at 5:00 for a um, startup meeting. Yes, I finally got it on the books. Um, so um, a place to be determined and time to be determined. But it's, it it is the, um, it is, that's the date I'm fully excited.
And this is the liaison.
This is the liaison group. Um, and my, um, my thanks goes out to Juliette, um, and Kathy Chase, who have quit, uh, quickly signed back on. Um, along with, um, I just got a, uh, from the Grotton City, um, counselor who is going to our group. So I'm very excited about that. And then the AGSA, GEA Board of Ed liaison, we have not met, um, in this past month. Um, and Grotton Scholarship.
Yeah, we just had a meeting last week. Um, if you had, were on their list for getting letters out, you should have received a letter. If you would like to get a letter for donation, would you please IM me or send me an email? Um, and I will make sure you get a letter and the form that you can fill out. Um, we're still, look, there's going to be a March 4th, there's going to be a Grotton Scholarship um, fundraiser, and I think it's at Chipotle. So and the thing is, is if it's at Chipotle, it's a 30% of the this, after $150, you get 30%, which is huge. So, you know, um, if you get a chance, you want to, I I honestly have never been to Chipotle, um, but I'll give it a go just to help with Grotton Scholarship. But, um, yeah, we're starting to really, people are starting to send in checks. I do not have the money at the the amounts at this point. They didn't have it last meeting. But we did send out over almost 300 letters. But if there's people that you think or you know that might want to donate, send me their name, and I'll see if they're on the list. If they're not, I'll contact you and I can get a letter out to them as well. But, you know, we're trying to get 50 grand or more to help our students. Um, and, uh, you know, I I don't, I don't think anybody's ever been turned away. So, you know, I think some, every kid's gotten something.
Thank you, Liz.
You're welcome.
I have two questions.
Yes, please.
Liz, I have two questions. The first one is, has there been any movement? Oh, thank you. Has there been any movement on how the money is distributed? I, um, earlier this year, I talked about the the idea that the money is sent directly to schools and the scholarships.
This thing is, as a scholarship, they they did some investigation, and I believe it was with their, with the, um, not quite sure who it was. I don't remember. I'm sorry, but I think it was lawyer. And they said that because it's a scholarship, it has to go to the schools. However, that's, you know, that's the the parameters which they're dealing with. But let me get back to Andrea on that, because I do know we discussed it because I brought it up again. I got you back. And, um, I will make sure I get that the correct answer to you this week, okay? I don't want to give you misinformation.
Yeah, well, I I guess what you could ask for me is if I stipulate that I I don't want it to go to the school, will will that, um, have an effect? So that's a question you could ask for me.
I'll get back to you.
Okay. And the second question is, I understand that it's it's a tough job getting to, uh, some of our, well, getting to our students that, uh, who are seniors to actually apply for the scholarship. So what's this, any strategy for that?
They've, um, and they're really talking with the career counselor at Fitch High School. She seems to be very receptive and moving on this. And it's really working on, uh, keeping the counselors themselves in the loop, and they're working towards more better communication.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Athletic fields.
Well, as you know, uh, the task force addressed you with the plan that they developed in 2020. Um, my understanding is that they are going to go to the town council next month with the results of the visioning project for what, uh, the, um, folks in the town want to do with the Claude Chester property, which would be the last piece um, before they can then present the entire plan to the council to decide whether they'll adopt it and how they're going to fund it.
Okay, thank you, Jay. I think the meeting is January 10th. Um, Trails?
Trails and Library, nothing to report.
And then, um, State Council, that's in spring. Um, and the Permanent School Building Committee. Ms. Joan, I would like to add that to a, um, to that list so that we can get reported on that on a regular basis. Thank you. Um, the next part is the consent agenda. Agenda, where all matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine. It'll be enacted by one motion. Uh, points of clarification will be allowed. I would note, I would entertain a motion. I got Andrea. Can I have a second?
Second.
I've got William. Any discussion? Hearing on all those in favor of the motion that's on the floor about the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain that motion has carried. We are now moving into, um, old business, which is really the approval, um, a list of approval of people from the second reading. Liz, would you be willing to read the motion for number one?
Certainly. Motion to approve policy P 6141.52, challenging curriculum for middle years as a second reading.
Can I have a second? I have William as a second. Um, discussion?
Yeah, I I wanted to clarify that this, we worked very, uh, very, very hard on this policy because we wanted to open up our our higher level courses to everybody, not just our student representation. And I can speak, I've thought about this all day, whether I should use this as an example. But I want to say 40 years ago, at least, when I was a teacher at one of the, um, junior high schools, I didn't recommend, uh, recommend our students. And it is, I know that it affected that individual deeply. And I've thought about that all the time for 40 or more years. So it's a personal thing with me. And I want to make sure that that everybody understands that certainly, that input from the counselors and the teachers should be sought by the to, by the parents. But the final decisions, decision on whether a student signs up, uh, up for an advancement, of course, should be the student and the parent. And we are not looking to to water down anything. All of these standards are, will remain in place, but we will make sure that there is, um, support for the student. And it's, it's, it's up to the student. If the student rises to the expectation with support, that's, that's what we want to see. And if the student doesn't, well, that's a choice that they're making.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of approving the policy P 6141.52, challenging curriculum for middle years as a second reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain that motion has carried. Rita, would you be willing to read the motion for number two, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
To approve policy P 3520.11, electronic information security as a second reading.
Can I have a second to that? I have Matthew for, I have Matthew for a second. Any discussion?
For the first time in my life, I'm going to say I have no idea what this, what I would be talking about if I were to talk about this, but maybe perhaps I'm back to Kennedy.
Well, I don't think that we, I think you answered all questions last reading.
But just to reorient that this is really necessary, that there are people out there trying to steal your data and other things. And we really, the insurance company is saying we need to have this two-factor authentication.
And we model this heavily, uh, against the key suggested policy, you know, so.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the policy, the, um, 3520.11, electronic information security as a second reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain the motion has carried. Beverly, would you like to read the motion for number three, please?
Okay, I make a motion to approve policy P 4113, period 12, minimum duty free lunch periods as a second reading.
Can I please have a second?
Second.
I got Liz, um, discussion on this.
Just that I found this in compliance with the Public Act 22-8.
Look at where it's going with knowing what the public act is. Any other conversation?
I have one question. Um, for the, um, non-certified staff, it says the board will provide the duty-free lunch period as defined by the Connecticut Department of Labor. And what's the definition of duty-free lunch period for the, um, non-certified staff?
So for full-time employees, they also get 30 minutes. We keep it consistent. Part-time will probably get a part-time, you know, break, but they aren't there necessarily for lunch because they might only work, you know, 20 hours or so during a week.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. To, um, all those in favor to, uh, through policy P 4113.12, minimum duty free lunch periods um, as a second reading, please, um, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain. One, uh, one abstention, that would be Matthew. It has, um, it has, the motion has passed.
May I explain the extension?
I, I don't think you need to. Um, unless someone here wants to hear Matthew's abstention.
Oh, I don't mind hearing it.
Okay.
If he wants to speak on it.
Thank you, Beverly.
I'm completely in accord.
I would also like to, but you'd, you'd need the microphone, Matthew.
I am completely in accord with not guaranteeing lunch to somebody who is either arriving after lunch or leaving before lunch. So if we have a part-time person who's there for a full day, I think he or she should be given a tiny permission.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, and, um, Beverly and Rita, thank you for slowing me down, um, because he has the right to explain that. Um, Jay, would you be willing? We're actually, would you be, we're on to new business. Um, and before we, we have one more. Oh, see, I already crossed it out. Jay, would you be willing to read, um, the motion for number four, please?
Sure, I move to approve policy P 3543 dot 31, electronic communications use and retention as a second reading.
Do I have a second to that?
Second.
I got, I've got Liz, sorry, Andrea. Um, discussion?
Do you want to say something to orient them?
This is similar to the previous one. This is really about record retentions and so forth. The one change that came out of the first reading was to make a small section of the language more generic so that it pointed specifically to the, the local policy as well as state policy around the specific times, so that we're not going back and modifying this each time. It really points to those guiding documents as far as timeframes that we need to make sure that we're keeping hard copies, electronic copies in each of those subcategories they talked about. So that was the only change that we.
It's basically a compliance policy.
Absolutely.
If I could say, it's not that I didn't understand it. I could just never explain it.
He does it the most.
Any other discussion? Hearing on all those to approve the policy P 3543.31, electronic communications use and retention as a second reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, abstain. That motion has carried. Okay, now I'm with everyone. Um, so we're now in the new business. Um, number three is going to be where we're going to go into executive session. Mark, I hope that you're hearing us so that when we get to that point, you'll be willing to put us into a breakout room with, um, uh, other people. But we'll talk about that in our, um, motion. Um, and so what I'm going to advise that we can do is go through the first two. Um, do information and proposals, advance planning, so that when we're done, we can, uh, we can just adjourn, um, after executive session. Um, do I get a favorable approval of that from people?
Could you say that again, why we're going into executive session?
Because we're talking about the, um, AGSA contract.
That's, uh, numbers, number three.
Uh, yeah, number three.
Okay.
Seems fine.
All right, thank you. Um, Matthew, would you be willing to, uh, read the motion for, um, new business, please?
I'd be pleased to.
Thank you.
I move, we approve the FY 23 CIP proposals.
Can I have a second to that? I have William. Um, this is, we have talked about this for actually a couple of times in committee as a whole. I know finance and facilities has also gone through it, but is there any other questions that people might have? Huh, if not, um, I, uh, all those in favor to approve the.
I, I do have a question. This is, we're on the CIP, right?
Yes, we are, ma'am.
Well, um, why, why don't we add the bleachers? I mean, I, I mean, it talks about the football field and drainage, but why haven't we added the bleachers?
I don't have the answer to that. Maybe it's because it's a, it would go above and beyond what, um, the cost of the CIP would be. I don't know. Jay or Sam, would you be willing, or Susan?
I don't, I don't have an answer as to why we didn't. Uh, I mean, I've, I've investigated the costs of which is in the last couple of weeks, uh, with some companies that I've worked for in the past, I worked with in the past. I did managers at my high school as well. I talked to the companies that had, did our own private form. Uh, so it's a three-quarters of a million dollars for one set of meters.
And we would need how many? How many sets would we need?
Well, the question is whether you, and again, it, uh, all depend on how what the field's doing, the side will do, but, um.
So what did Sam, what did you say again? It would cost what?
What's that?
Okay, so unfortunately, Liz, um.
Yeah, my, 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 my internet went down. My, I just wanted, what was it? I couldn't hear Sam. It was a, can you, never mind.
Three-quarters of a million dollars.
Okay. And how many?
One set. One.
That's a, that's an estimate that I got.
I'm going to recognize Jay.
So, um, Sam can correct me if I'm wrong, but one of the issues over the the many years of the existence of this athletic fields task force is that they want to flip the orientation of the football field. So the concern is you go and you invest all this money in new bleachers, and then you flip everything around. Um, so, I mean, that's, that's kind of what we're up against. That that also may affect what we do with those auxiliary buildings. I mean, personally, I'd like to see us put on there doing something about those public restrooms. Um, but now we've created this, this task force that the town council has basically said to us, you know, we want to consider all of this in one package. Um, to be honest with you, even the renovation of the field, because the Athletic Fields Task Force is going to recommend putting, uh, down a, um, uh, turf field. Uh, the town council is probably not going to consider this, but it's been on our list for many, many years. It felt sort of wrong to pull it now as though it no longer matters. I mean, they're going to have to make a decision one way or the other. Either this field has to be renovated or the, uh, artificial turf has to be put down. So, you know, it it all revolves around this task force and. You know, it it all revolves around this task force and and wanting to do everything in one fell swoop at the town level. That's my understanding.
Yeah, and I think that how he presented, Rita, I will recognize you absolutely, um but I um I think. What I got from him is that it's actually like in three phases, not three phases, but three areas, right? There's Sutton, there's Sutton Park, there's the um Clachester, and then there's the Fitch. So that it is in sort of three phases, but I'm going to recognize Rita. And then Beverly and phases is probably not the word that I need.
I I I think that that would is would be a good thing, but I think we still have to put it in for safety reasons. And Nia Seaman mentioned it in their report, I think if we don't. Have that a- as one of our requests for our C I P. I. I just think that they need to see how urgent it is and how unsafe they are. And even if it's what three quarters of a million dollars for one, how big is one? What do you mean by one? So I I just would like to see it at least. Included in our C I P packet. And whether or not they switch the fields, maybe we can just put the bleach, new, new bleachers back for far enough. Where even if they put in artificial turf, it won't matter. They did say there was enough room. To do that. So that's just my feeling.
I I I actually don't think that your idea is a wrong idea, um I just don't know how we would go about doing that what with a C I P package. Already put together, but. I, so I I don't know how to answer that question. Beverly?
Um, two things, I'm going to support Rita in her suggestion uh for all the reasons that she stated. And the second thing is as far as this artificial turf. Um, when I was watching football over the weekend. A lot of the teams are going back to natural glass, so we really have to stop. Put a, put a reset on this artificial turf idea and really explore natural glass also. Thank you.
Uh Beverly, I don't disagree with you, and I know that William has spoken to a little bit, but I'm not even quite sure if we would be the people that would. I mean, I think we would have a big discussion about it, um but I I share your thoughts.
I do too.
Matthew?
I I will support going ahead with this. Basically out of the fear that even if everything is approved for this master plan. From what I understood them to have said, it's going to be twenty four, twenty five, possibly twenty six before it's funded. Um. And I'd say. Let's not lose the attainable in pursuit of the ideal.
That's why we can't wait for bleachers.
Jay?
I just told Liz to go.
Um, the um. You know, for all the same reasons, then we should really be putting. The uh field house and the um. And the restrooms. I mean, you know, if we want to be consistent with everything that we really need. We need to put all of that on the list. And um. You know, I understand Beverly's concern, there's also a uh. A group in town that's very much against uh the artificial turf going up at Fitch. But even if they stay with the natural, um. This particular task force uh has uh discussed. Actually flipping the field and in the other direction. Um, and again, there's reasons, you know, why they think that 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 would be better, um I really am not able to speak to all of that. Um, but yeah, I mean, to be consistent, we can put all of that on the list. Um. You know, so that it doesn't get lost. Uh, just like the fact that if we keep this. This field, you know, how many years have we been putting on this list that the? Football field needs uh to be re-crowned and that it's a safety issue. And um. You know, and yet it goes down um in a vote at the town council every year.
Any other discussion?
Well, how can we add, add on these, you know, the field house, the bathroom, public restrooms, they're so important. And I mean, we need to be. Compliant for handicap. People and we're not.
Liz?
That was my question is like, so, I mean, I I'm not adverse to what is here, but what I think is we just haven't gone far enough. Do we have to do another C I P? Is there, is that the next step to a, to additional C I P? Is that what we need to do? To add the things that are essential? I mean, at some point. You know, it's, it is our responsibility.
We do have a project, A, listed Fitch High School Athletic Facilities. We talk about crowning of the field. So what I've heard you say is that. And I agree, we should be looking at the field house, we already know. We've gotten the rendering, so we know more about what that would cost. The restrooms, um so the two buildings. And then um. The bleachers, I think we could probably find out how many bleachers we would need, so we could earmark it. But that could go into a whole field house, field. Athletic Fields. Project. At least they would know unless we, unless Sam, you think we should do those as the three separate. Items that would go along with this.
I I I'll have to talk to the town and see how I can add something to the C I P list at this point.
So we could approve this tonight with. That we, that we would come back on in January or even at a C O W. With a look at um adding another C I P.
We meet with John Burt next Monday. He was sick, so he didn't make the meeting today, but we will be meeting with him on a variety of things. Let's add this one too, we can put it together and show him.
Jay? And then Matthew, sorry.
I, I, I kind of think, you know, we should amend this tonight and make the um the will of the board known. Um, rather than leave it till January, February, when it's going to get lost in all the other budget matters. I mean, the worst they can do is say no, but at least we put on record. You know, what our priorities are. Um, you know, whether it'll pass muster with zoning, uh a planning, um. Because I know the planning department actually reviews our C I Ps, you know, uh at least we'll be on record that this is what we voted for. And that we weren't the one standing in the way of it.
I agree with Jay.
Okay, thank you, Beth.
On the substance of what we want to do.
You're gonna have to raise your voice.
Substance of what we want to do, uh. I'm for all three. In process, I think if we put all three under one item, that makes it much easier to turn it down once. I think we might be better to put a separate item for each of the three things, if we don't get the whole pile, we can get something. I do agree, we should ask for what we think is best for the kids. And as I mentioned to the other people with the fields committee, there's a litigation opportunity just waiting to happen, whether it's with Title Nine or whether it's an accident or you. Field or whether it's an accident on the bleachers. Uh and I think that means, I I hope if we decide to go ahead, that will be eminently communicated to the town board.
Andrea?
I wanted to uh support what. Thank you, I wanted to support this. Even in terms of of just complying with N E S. Because they're the ones that also noted strongly that we, we need to address this. So that I I believe that we need to be on record for having. Taking, taking it to the town and if the town turns it down, well then, we did what we were supposed to do for kids and for our. Our rating.
So what I'm hearing from the group is that some type of amendment where we add the bleachers, we add. The um concession stand and field house. Um.
And restrooms.
Yeah, I saw the concession stand and restrooms as the same thing, so but um but yeah, um. I'm, I'm looking towards Sam to find out how we would do an amendment to your C I Ps.
I think it would just directly to add those ideas to, I said, amend them to that. Submission that I already made. So that when I go to the point, I can get it to John and say that I was directed by the board to do that.
Right.
And then we can get it, then we'll move on to the final condition.
And you would vote to vote for what we have as amended.
Right.
With the addition of the field house, the restrooms, the food concession stand and the bleachers.
In the past, when, in the past, when I brought these things uh through the C I P process. They, some things have been cut at the planning commission stage. Other things have been cut by a town manager, so those things can be cut before you even get to the town council. But I'm not saying that it would or it wouldn't.
Right.
I'm just saying that's a part of.
But, but.
I think if it's an amendment to this, I think it has a little more weight than um individual items, not very.
So uh um people online, did you hear what he um what Sam had stated?
Not, not clearly.
Okay, so that what? So what, what Sam is saying is, is that to make an amendment to the current. Let the current C I Ps where we're adding the field house, the bathrooms, the um concession stand and the um bleachers as an amendment. Um for our C I Ps where, where. It at least um goes on record that the Board of Ed is really concerned about uh about that. Um, but he also warned us that the process of presenting C I Ps is um that it can, the R C I Ps could get um. Could get um knocked off in the plan by the plan, the Grattan Planning. Um, department or the town manager, but at least our voice is being heard around that. I'm going to recognize Matthew and then Jay.
Uh, question for you, Sam.
Please raise your voice so that he can hear.
Sam. Sam, I am. Question for you, Sam, uh I understood that to have said perhaps been corrected, but probably three bleachers would be needed altogether.
There, we have two sets of bleachers presently, there's the the home and a visitor, so. Uh, I I talked to these companies about uh replacing uh about the same a number of seats with handicap. Uh accessibility, et cetera, on the uh on the home side and present. That would also include a uh a score of.
Understood, understood, so my concern is that if we're asking for a million and a half dollars for one item. And we got it. Then everything else might. Fall by the wayside. Do you think it would be reasonable to? Don't give me an answer if you're not ready to. Wouldn't it be reasonable to say, though we need two? We're asking for one so that we can replace the one that has the most traffic. And uh. And then we're going to hopefully come back once the field committee makes its final decisions.
Well, Sam is not going to have the money, monies available for the C I Ps. Like, like we do in the other ones, I, for this amendment.
I'm, I'm not trying to tell Sam what to do.
Yeah, I'm just saying that.
I don't know what to do, all I know is. If we're pushing the envelope, let's not push it too far.
We do, well, this is the planning for the field house.
Yep.
Two outside buildings, yeah. Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Right.
I'm gonna. Well, I, I, it's an estimate. And also remember, it's also part of the field committee, this is where it gets kind of very tricky, this is where there's a lot of roads that kind of converge. So, um, Jay?
Yeah, I mean, what I, what I hear people saying is we want to put out there, everything that we feel is a priority. Um, all of these things are important for safety. Um, for equity. For all the reasons that have been discussed over the years. So uh to Matthew's point. You know, I would amend it as all of these being individual items. And then at least we get it on record tonight. So that we have something to discuss in January, February, March. If we don't do something tonight. I don't think we'll have a chance to to put these back on, and then we can decide. What the top priority is based on what money, if any, the town council is going to allocate towards C I Ps this year.
So Jay? Can I ask for you to set a um, it's, I'm going to say the word adjusted, but that's not the word. Um, amend, amend to the motion?
So we need to make a a motion to amend?
Yes.
Well. Um, I'm not sure that I'm the best one for the wording, maybe Sam can can assist with that, but. I mean, we're basically looking to amend. This motion to add. A D A. Compatible bleachers. Modernized. Public restrooms. Um, modernized concession stand. And renovated. Field house.
Each with their own separate C I P, right?
Right. So at least we have spoken on, on, these are needs that we have been talked about for many years, but it's finally concrete and then. You know, we can just thrash it out during the budget process.
Sam?
So are these going to be three news, a separate cheese?
Yes, we, we want, we want them to be three separate so that they don't have to, they can just say no and it to the whole thing.
For leaving the pitch.
Football crowning, yeah.
Because I did tell them that I was going to need to board with these to approve, so we know that. You had.
Okay.
I don't see where B is. Do we, we, are they listed A, B, C? Are they kind of, it doesn't really look like it follows.
Uh, all right, so can I have a second on, before we go any further, can I have a second on that amendment?
I'll second it, that is, can I ask a question?
Yeah, well, I gotta get it seconded. I've got seconded it, I've got Andrea who seconded discussion, Andrea?
Yeah, I.
You guys speak loudly, please.
Can you get a microphone, so that's, that's the amendment. I, I just, my question is. If. If we do it. If I, I, I'm afraid that if we only ask for one set of bleachers and we get it, we'll never get the other two. That's what, that's my question.
I, I, I think people have to remember that this is also part of the field study plan, like the bleachers have been noted in the field plan.
What, we're asking for three, right? Not, but.
I believe that we'd be asked, I don't know what the. There's a, there's a home side and a visitor side for the football field, so we'll be two separate.
Two, all right, that's my question, thank you.
Any others, um, any other? Discussion on the amendment on the, on the table, which is to. Um, the amendment is to add um each separately. Projects that are in the back end of Fitch, which is the. Um, field, the field house, the concession stand, the bleachers. And the concession stand has the um. The bathrooms um to both modernize, safety and A D A proof.
And field house, right?
I think I said that.
Yeah, E D A and I think Title, is it Title Nine?
And Title Nine, that's right. So basically federal and state compliance. Okay. All those in favor of the amendment, please say I.
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 Oppose? Abstain? That amendment has. Carried. Ms. Joan, I now go back to the original motion, is that correct?
Yes, as amended.
Okay, yeah, oh, I like you, all right. So, all, all those in favor to approve the fiscal year twenty three C I P per proposals as amended, please say I.
I.
Oppose? Abstain? That motion has carried, you guys, that was a really good discussion. All right, Andrea, would you please be willing to read the motion uh uh for number two?
I am willing, I'm delighted to do it, you know, I never read out loud. But for the the maintenance crew and for the custodial crew and for the secretarial body, I. I'm thrilled to make this, to um, to move. To recognize January eighteenth, two thousand twenty three as National Maintenance Day. And to direct the Superintendent of Schools to send a letter of appreciation to the maintenance staff.
Can I have a second to that?
Second.
That's Liz, any um discussion on that?
I just want to say again, um. Our schools could not operate without the dedication. I just wanna say again, um our schools could not operate without the dedication. Of the sta, of the staffs that I mentioned. And uh. I don't have to say it, the boiler room says it all.
Thank you, Andrea. Okay. Alright, all those in favor to approve the motion um. Uh to recognize January eighteenth, twenty twenty-three as National Maintenance Day and to. Direct the Superintendent of Schools to send a letter of appreciation to the maintenance staff. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Abstain, the motion has carried. Um I'm gonna go to um Rita, we're gonna be moving down to information and letters of communication. Do you have any?
Um, no, not really.
Okay, thank you Rita. Liz?
Yeah, um I went to the robotics pancake breakfast. Had a delicious meal, but lots of good conversation. And I think uh as I was talking to some of the parents, some of you all got a uh email from a young, a, a young lady, a student. Who's in the band, because I told her that. You know, it would be nice to be invited to some of this stuff, you know, personally, and they listened to me. I was like shocked, people listen to me still. But um, you know, it's just that it was really wonderful to see people come out, support the robotics team. They've had their struggles, uh and they're, they're rebuilding with lots of positive energy, so.
That's Rita?
Yes, I have a question. If I wanted to make a donation to go directly to the. Fitch Music Boosters to support their um trip to Honolulu. How do I do that?
You know what, Rita? I would uh send Ted Kelleher a note. Email Ted, cuz he could tell you.
Okay.
Or, or William could also tell.
Oh, well, that's right, William, you're there. Sorry, William.
I will have Sandra Hall, who is the orchestra, who's the lead for it, send you a link. And that links, you'll be able to um. Uh it's really easy, you'll be able to just donate the entire trip. Versus, you'll have two choices, donate to a particular student or to the trip. Just choose on, donate to the trip. And uh that'll be great. Um that's wonderful, because if we raise. Five thousand dollars through uh fundraising and donations, we have somebody that will match that with another five thousand.
Oh wow. Too, please?
I, I'll send it to.
That'd be great. Alright, Beverly?
Okay, I, I attended the cave webinar on the role of the school board. Uh for advocacy. And uh some of the hot button issues were special ed in term of funding. It was seventy-two percent, but they found extra money. So you're gonna get ninety percent reimbursement. Well, you got ninety percent reimbursement last year. That's what they said.
Access cost? Are you talking about access?
No, it just says special ed funding, in term of funding. So I could have left that out, as, as excess cost, but I'm just looking at my notes. They said it was seventy-two percent for extra money, ninety percent reimbursement last year. That's what Sheila McCabe said.
We'll follow up on that. I know access cost has gone up. I mean, they're looking for the percentage to go up, but. That money actually goes directly to the town to afford the budget. And if it goes over, just like Impact Eight, it's additional funds that go into the town. Not to the school district, yeah, but we'll find out.
They said there's gonna be legislation on the reading program. Social emotional learning and school buses in terms of electric school buses. And I, I should have said this before, but I just looked at my notes. Districts can ask for money for charging stations. That's what Sheila McCabe said. Um they're gonna have legislative breakfast in January of twenty twenty-three and um. What else? Oh, they said the school COVID test kits are going to expire the end of January. So please get them out to the community, to families. Because they will expire at the end of January, then you have to dispose of them.
We're sending them all out. Sam's on it, he's already done the headcount, and we're gonna say, we want you safe. I actually said a little bit of that. In the past couple board notes, to keep yourself healthy, but we're gonna send them all out so they can use them over the holidays when they're with other people.
Okay, and it's gonna be legislation on military, on the military compact. They said it needs changes. And they did mention Groton.
They mentioned us?
Mm-hmm. If there's a bill.
Military compact.
Yeah, military compact.
I know.
And if there's anything that might impact our district, they said, give your thoughts to Cave. And um that's about it.
So my understanding is that Learn is gonna have host the legislators in January, but it's not for board members. It's just for superintendents.
Well, according to Sheila, they said they're gonna start up with legislative breakfasts. They're getting that in, in place now for January. She didn't say it was only for superintendents. Because this webinar was for board members.
Uh that was just for Learn, that Learn is gonna have.
Okay.
Um legislation, but um Andrea, I'm wondering if Andrea, Andrea, if you would be willing to be thinking about out loud with this. With Susan about getting. Our local.
We typically do it at Fitch for our local legislators.
We have done it at Fitch. We have, yes, we have, and but.
Before COVID.
Yeah. But, but that may, may not. Be true anymore. Well, I, I, I stopped being the district coordinator and it went to somebody else.
Right, but you're now back on Cape, right? So maybe you can.
But I wanted to, I wanted to. Beverly is so much more knowledgeable about that. I wanted to talk to Beverly about that. So anyway, but we can have that offline.
I'll find out. Um the one for superintendents is we're just talking about the unfunded mandates and we're. Kind of setting the stage for. What we expect Cave to be monitoring with legislation. That doesn't usurp the authority of our local boards of ed. So specifically with some of the errors that occurred this year. So that's just why we're meeting, cuz we want um the legislators to hear our voices, but they do need to hear the board's voices as well.
And one last thing, Susan, this might interest you if you don't know about it. The State Department's looking at changes on math education.
Well, I knew, once I, what did I say? Soon as they feel like they can mandate programs in literacy, they're gonna go after math. Instead of setting the model curriculum and setting the standards like they're supposed to. So.
Thank you, that's.
Thank you.
Beverly, thank you for doing that.
So I'm unclear about the legislative breakfast. Is somebody hosting it? Well, like you said, I'll, I'll, oh.
Yeah, we can talk about that.
Do you know the, what is it, do we know the date for the legislative day in Hartford?
It was November, I think.
There is no legislative date in the spring?
No, it's always in March.
Oh, March, thank you. So it's.
They'll, they'll, they'll let us know.
Talking about the day on the hill that Cave um.
Right.
Puts on, that's in March.
Right, and, and because Patrice mentioned at the meeting that they still don't know which rooms are gonna be allowed to go into this year. So I think it's everything, you know, they'll, they'll update us once the session starts. The, in, like, I think it's around January. Fourth or fifth.
Yeah. Jay, do you have anything to report?
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Matthew? William?
Nothing to report.
Andrea?
I got all of those nice invitations. I was unable to go to anything, and I'm really apologize, I'm apologizing for that. Or the only other, other thing that I have is um, to mark your calendars for January fifteenth, that's a. Sunday of Martin Luther King Weekend, that's when the Echumenical Service will be at Saint James Church in New London, that's three o'clock.
If we get anything in print, I wanna get it out in board notes into everyone.
Very well.
Um agenda topics before we go into our last. Um I have um seen if we can um have a bigger conversation about this esport program. Um it seems that many of us are not aware of it, so it would probably be a really good thing for us to have. I would also like to have an agenda topic where, where not only do we bring in, like, we bring in our local legislators. And have a meeting maybe with the town council, RTM, um and the Board of Ed and our local. Our, our local legislators, because this field thing is gonna be a big thing. Um, um out of all the, all the other stuff as well. Um and also magnet themes um in terms of inter, inter-district magnet, what does that mean? Do we get more money? You know, do the legislators need to um be um advocating for us? Um what have you? So I'm gonna add those um at some point in our agenda. Anything else, folks? Matthew?
This is to schools. I haven't had the chance to visit a single school this epidemic year. And every time I've asked about it, what I've heard is we're doing the best and such, and when we're done with that, we'll be able to schedule visits. I'd really like to see how often that is.
We'll look in January. Um we've been sending out all of the after-school extracurriculars so that you can certainly go to those. I know you've been going to PTO meetings. Um but we've really had a tight schedule, so we've had NEAS, we've had NEAS, and that wasn't a place. For, you know, a walk through at that time, so.
Beverly?
Uh on behalf of rotten community males, I'd like to thank Ernie and um. Probably Sam for allowing us to use Thames River Magnet School on Wednesday evenings. To distribute meals to the community. So thank you very much.
Beverly, is that every Wednesday? Yes.
Yes, every Wednesday and every Monday at the Grattan Senior Center, oh, what, five fifty-five, excuse me. And uh every Wednesday at um Thames River. But it, it really is, um, we really appreciate the school district allowing us to use their facility. It means a lot to us.
It's great.
And we give out like a hundred and seventy, between a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and seventy meals on Wednesday evening. So thank you very much.
Wow. People come and eat here, Beverly.
No, it's uh, we, they drive out, we, that, we ask them, how many meals do you need? They say ten. We get ten together and we give them ten meals, the next car comes out. And that's how it goes. They don't come into the building.
I've seen that, and I was wondering what that was. Yeah, okay, that's wonderful. Thank you.
Can I add to that? Uh at the fried fifty-fives, well, between fried fifty-five and Thames River. It's between three hundred and fifteen and four hundred meals a week.
Wow, that's pretty amazing.
At fried fifty-five, you can eat in the area where we. And would recently.
Okay, thank you. If we're hearing no more communications, I'm gonna make a motion that the Board of Ed goes into executive session. Um with uh the, in the motion, I'm gonna ask that Lori Lepine, Ken Knight. And Susan Austin um join us in executives and Phil, excuse me, um into executive. Uh executive session. Can I have a second to that?
I'll second it.
Hearing none, um all those in favor of going into executive session with the people um I just mentioned, please say aye. Oppose? Abstain that motion has carried. Mark, can you throw us in? Into a breakout room?
I can, Kim?
Thank you. Yes, Jay.
Aren't we supposed to announce, uh maybe I missed it, I'm sorry. Aren't we supposed to announce the reason we're going in?
Um Jay, thank you, I'm sorry. And the reason why we're going into executive session is for the um purposes of um of approving. Um discussion of the contract uh for the administrator. Thank you. Thank you, Jay.
Good night.
Good night, thank you. Are we back? Yes.
Some of us are.
Yeah, some of us are. I'm not sure if I'm even here anymore, but.
I'm, I'm here, sorry. I'm here. Sorry, I was muted and I was not aware. So the motion.
Who, who, who read the motion, Kim?
I, I'm just starting to. I'm trying to. Uh, to prove the ratification of the Association of Gotten Schools Administrator, uh, administrators, AGASA contract for the period of July first, twenty twenty-three to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven. Can I have a second to that?
Second.
Second. Is there any conversation, discussion? Hearing on all those in favor of the motion that's on the floor to approve the ratification of the, um, AGSA contract for the period of July first, twenty twenty-three to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Abstain that motion has carried. Guys, good work. I have a motion for adjourned on the, on the table. I'll, uh, to have a second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I, I'd like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Happy holiday.